So it's nine o'clock. We'll open up our work session for September first, two thousand and twenty. Please silence or shut off your cell phones. Join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you.
How are you doing today?
Good. How are you doing?
Very good. Thank you. Um, we do have additions, um, and maybe a couple other additions. Melanie, you want to go over the ones that we have?
Yeah, I have two. Computer purchases, and Warner Creek Correctional Facility retention coalition updates.
And then we have a request from, uh, HR for Desert Cruisers discussion on parade, I believe. And then you want to add discussion on rower. All right, and I would like to, um, talk about the Hoosier letter and OSHA.
That's good.
Letter. All right. With that, um, we, let's just start right off. Jay, you're here. I know you're busy. Let's just start off with, I know you've talked to.
Thanks for hearing this on short notice. I got a call from the Desert Cruisers last night. They have been asked by the Roundup Association to try and make this parade happen. So Desert Cruisers has agreed to do it. However, when they started filling out paperwork for, for ODOT, ODOT asked, you know, who are you covered with? Who's your insurance company? They don't have coverage. So they, they talked to Joseph Putley last night and they talked to me to see if maybe they can help in any way. I just got off the phone with Joseph. They think he's waiting for underwriter approval, but he thinks he's going to be able to get that approved for somewhere in the three hundred dollar range, um, which is actually really, um, reasonable in my mind. He also pitched the idea of potentially maybe piggybacking on the county having to be a county event so that it could be covered under our insurance. So those are the two options that you wanted discussed.
You and I always say on the discussion, I'll just go right out there. Desert Cruisers is not a county entity. The Roundup is. The Roundup's asking them to do it, not sponsoring it. We have a contract with the Desert Cruisers for them to lease property from us. But, um, I'm, I myself can be in support of trying to find the money for them to get the insurance. But, um, I think it's a stretch for non-county entity to be covered under county insurance. That's just opened us up for some potential liability and risk, I believe. And then we may have many other people that's putting on parades or other entities on the county to come in and be the sponsor for the parades. Because this isn't only parade in Lake County. So we have to think about whenever there's any other parades or any other liability or any other people wanting us to take on this risk that is, doesn't get overshadowed by just the Labor Day parade here in Lakeview area. So, um, putting that out there for the board to hear of it. If they're able to get it for three hundred dollars, I think that's within reason of where we could possibly look at, uh, making a grant for that amount for them to be covered. They're taking on the risk and everything through their insurance company. Discussion thoughts? That's mine. You know, it's, it's an event in Lakeview area, but we have a whole county to represent as other, uh, so other entities may want to do things.
Yeah, this was on the town's agenda for yesterday because back in August, they had approved, um, the idea of having a parade. So yesterday, they were going to meet and discuss it, but they didn't have a forum. So there's no, they have no plan at this point to, to change that decision. So at this point, it's still being approved.
So, uh, just for the way it works, the parade is a chamber sponsored event. The town of Lake gives the permit for the route. And then you have ODOT that you have to have the permit for the route. So the Chamber Board decided not to go forward. The town apparently had their meeting. I don't know if they were going to sponsor the parade or what they were planning on doing. But there still has to be, to my knowledge, a permit to build a designated route. And then the route is an incorporated part of Lakeview.
Yeah. So that decision was made, um, when they met earlier in August. So.
So the Desert Cruisers could just take that permit?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Um, I talked to one of the council members last night a little bit about this. They are saying that this permit is transferable to the Desert Cruisers. But unfortunately, they didn't have a forum yesterday and they weren't able to take action.
Okay. Thanks, Melanie.
So, so if we were to support by giving them money for insurance, the Desert Cruisers still have hoops they have to go through. It's not somebody that the county can just say, we're having a parade and they'll bite ass.
So then they're responsible for, um, compliance with, you know, the flow of the sand.
I think what we're talking about now is just the fact that, you know, they're putting it on. Desert Cruisers are taking this on as their project. They want to do it. They're just lacking maybe a little bit of funding in order to acquire the insurance and the coverage for the event.
Yeah, they're willing to do all the work. They just like some help covering the insurance.
That's all we're making the decision on.
So would you guys be okay with granting them up to five hundred dollars for insurance parade?
Which funds would be most appropriate, I suppose?
Economic development. That's where we pay for, you know, the rates on the lights and fireworks and different things.
Yeah, I, I would be comfortable with the end. I would be comfortable with that decision being made in the work session today because of the timeframe is so short. I, I guess where I'm thinking is, is, um, we could contention upon them getting through and all the, I don't want to say red tape, all the process to build, have the parade. Contention upon that. If they're able to do that, we will, um, give them up to whatever the maximum of five hundred dollars but up to whatever the cost of insurance is. Not to exceed the cost of insurance. If they want to give them five hundred dollars, just put it in their bank account. But I, that's, I think that's a direction we can, we can help as other entities want to step up.
I don't think they're doing all the work for it and everything else. I don't think, uh, we're going the round of covering them under our insurance. But, you know, as far as finding the funding for it, it's still going to cost us the same amount of dollars. You know, basically to get that. Whether we sponsor the event or they do or whatever, it's still going to cost those hundred dollars out of that same account. So we just need to move forward with it. I'm perfectly fine with that. If, uh, you want to vote or if you want to have a consensus with the board?
I think we need a motion. That way, because, because of one reason, my opinion is, is that, um, there's a risk whenever anybody takes on these types of responsibilities. And there's compliance that you have to do. And we all know that right now in Lake County, we're trying to, hopefully everybody stay in compliance best we can so we're not looked at hard. I won't use the word harass, so looked at hard. Our schools are just getting ready to open up and stuff. We, we don't need any more attention in anything. So I, I would think a motion, uh, would be appropriate.
I'll make a motion to approve up to five hundred dollars for my office's suggestion, uh, the economic development fund for the Desert Cruisers to acquire their, um, or their insurance.
Second. Motion's been made in second to approve up to five hundred dollars out of the Economic Development Fund for the Desert Cruisers as they are looking at putting on Labor Day parade. Any further discussion?
None for me. Just make sure that we get, let Tom Mydon know that they can move forward as soon as they can find out what they can do from our money or whatever else.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
That's it. Thank you, Jay.
Appreciate it.
So does the chair vote that? I thought I should have. I said I'm quiet. Now I'm saying I'm quiet. Thank you. Did I say motion carried?
Motion carried. Motion carried one way or the other, so. I wasn't going to say chair doesn't need to vote aye, but.
Ronnie, are you here to, to sit through the meeting?
Seeing what's happening with the commissioners.
Thank you for being here. Okay. We, we don't have an item. Time item's nine thirty, so let's just go right along to, and I'm sorry, on the Warner Creek Correctional Facility Coalition update. That is, James should be here at ten o'clock. So we didn't put a time down there, but that's what time I had told him. So, um, if she comes in a little bit early, we'll jump in there. Um, computer purchases is the other addition we have.
Do you want to, do you want to cover the NALOCs, NALOC boxes first, just so we don't forget about it?
Sure, I, we build down to other business, come back to additions. NALOC, NALOC box, uh, discussion. Go ahead, James, I believe that's you.
I just wanted to put, I, I know you guys all probably received an email from Trace Swanzler. I don't know, the possibility of putting one of these boxes in the courthouse. At least one box. I'm not necessarily sure we need one, but I wanted to hear what you guys' thoughts were on the subject.
So I'm probably the least educated on this.
That's typically for overdoses, basically, and people that possibly have an overdose. There is a growing risk or, uh, potential for someone having an overdose here in the courthouse when they're here. I don't know if the Sheriff's Department already have some of this stuff, but making one of these boxes available in another part of the building, it might be prudent to look into. This is just a discussion. There's no action on it, but.
So you hit exactly what I, I sort of needed to know. I, I believe our law enforcement is trained and they know how to do this and they probably have access to it. Do we need more than that here in the courthouse? And if we do have more than that, who would take the training in that side of the town, I guess? I'm, I know it's a great thing that somebody will be, but it's also, I think you have to know to.
Oh, you just read the instruction manual. That's what I read.
Leave a tiny page instruction manual for you. Well, most of the, most of the officers have the Narcan on them. On their homes. And so.
I know they have it up in the jail, don't they?
Yeah. And so to have another one and then to have somebody that isn't trained like our officers are, ministry and to save somebody, we might be really hanging out there in liability. And so I would make the discussion with the sheriff first and ask him if he thinks we need that and then go from there.
So, very good point. That's where I was going to go. And I'm not sure I heard absolutely, are our jailers trained and have it also? A question.
Oh, I'm not positive if the jail has it anymore. That's a question for the sheriff because, um, usually it's the officer that brings the thing to him has ability to give it. And so I was never trained to give it. Okay, working at the jail, but that could be different now.
So our officers are sometimes stretched pretty thin. They are out of the building at times. So we want to consider the fact that they may not have an officer on hand if we have something happen. I mean, maybe we want to at least can talk with the sheriff and see if we can make sure that someone is trained on this in the jail. At least during business hours when we have the public in the building.
I, that seems like the most appropriate thing to me. Because if that's in their realm of expertise and ability to get training, more so than probably somebody else just in the building. And there's always somebody up at the jail, twenty-four seven. So James, do you want to talk to the sheriff or you want me to?
You are liaising. But I'm just, I want to have the discussion with my board because Trace asked, uh, what we thought and wanted to kind of go on discussed.
Sounds good.
So if, if you and I can coordinate, if you don't have time or whatever, I can, I can definitely go down and talk to them whenever it works, whatever we're able to. Okay. That's all I have on there.
Perfect. Jumping on down to the next thing, Melanie, lastly, computer purchases.
So I would like to leverage some of the CARES dollars that are available to our county to purchase new, um, software and computers and docking stations for the sheriff's deputies. And they are operating a very outdated system and, um, they're having a lot of IT problems. And I think this would be a good advantage of these funds. And I talked to someone at AOC and she said that would be a great purchase. So I am not commending making purchases. They're expensive and they haven't been budgeted yet. The total cost for software, computers, the, um, hardware would be about four thousand dollars, just under. Um, that should be the highest amount. We're going to try to get it down, of course, but that's our jumping off.
What's a four thousand total?
Per officer.
Per officer. Okay, I'll do that. I'll say it.
How many officers are we looking at? Thirteen officers.
So you're looking at four Gs.
Yeah.
I, I have to say, I'm, I'm a little shocked at the price of the laptop. I mean, I, I know a little about computers. You can buy an Alienware computer with sixteen gigabytes of RAM and some of the most up-to-date video cards and everything else you can possibly get with multiple terabytes of hardware up hard drive space for twelve hundred dollars. And we're looking at four thousand dollar laptop here. And I, I'm, I'm a little surprised that the cost of just putting the software on the computer, are we buying the software multiple times for each officer?
Yeah. And they're, um, military-grade roughbooks because they are hard on them.
They've got the hard cases.
They're in and they're out. This includes, um, next day, the, the limited warranty. So we can get them fixed as soon as possible. Because lots of things happen. They, they have issues with them all of the time. So it's good to have that warranty for three years. And it's expensive, but you didn't budget for it and it's something they need. It's something they need to provide good service regardless of COVID, but especially during the times of COVID when things are so stressful.
Oh, I tell you, I'm in support. I can't speak to, um, what James is speaking to me much more first on computer.
It's just, it's just the price. It's awfully high per laptop.
I know we've had that discussion over the years several times and it gets to the, the type of use. And I don't want to say abuse, but they just get really hard use. And so it's what falls in line with law enforcement, what I've been told. But if we're able to leverage these CARES dollars and get this, get these updated, they're all going to be updated at one time. Has to be a budgeted line item for these to start the reserve or whatever so that we don't be hit all at one time. If we're lucky enough to be able to do this now with the CARES dollars, what a great thing. But for the future, there has to be a replacement plan and that. So we're going to have, what did you say, thirteen, thirteen or fourteen?
What do you mean CARES?
All at one time. So.
Last time, they were the same price last time and they got a grant for them. But I do, I agree, we need to budget for their replacements.
Yes, we're going to have to start.
Very expensive.
Yep. Yeah, if, if we weren't, if we decide to do this, we probably wouldn't be fortunate enough to have the misfortune of leverage dollars like we are right now. Because that's fifty-two thousand.
And I think it's, it's over the amount that I kind of feel like we should put out for an RFP. And we're not really looking at anything like that. So.
RFP's seventy-five thousand.
Oh, is it? Oh, I forgot. Sorry, I had fifty thousand more.
And they're individual items. It's not a capital purchase, you're right.
No, we're purchasing them all at once.
Right.
But that's, I mean, one way or the other. And plus, you know, what about, it's three hundred and ninety-five dollars, four hundred bucks in docking station. Is that included in that four thousand or?
Up to four thousand.
Up to four thousand.
It is included. You guys can say no. I'm just putting it out there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that it's, it's needed. It's just, you know, it, it, it's a gamble, honestly, too, as to whether or not the CARES dollars will be there to replenish this cost. And it's a non-buttered item. Putting the money out there and whether or not we get the money from the CARES dollars to pay for this.
Well, on the CARES dollars, everything that is eligible to PM and asked for and implemented and spent before December thirty-first. And so Lake County has a total of two hundred and fifty thousand to leverage, a little over twenty thousand at this point. And so it's strongly recommended across the state to leverage all the CARES dollars that you can get. Right. So that's allowable. So even if we'd done this, that would put us at, say, seventy to eighty thousand dollars. That's still leaving a hundred and seventy thousand dollars out there that we haven't been able to leverage. We're hopeful that through the fair and through the roundup, all unusual expenses for the rodeo associated with COVID that we're able to leverage those dollars, even that special parking area, special restrooms and so on and so on. Hopefully we'll build every some there. My guess is that that'd be hopefully in the ten thousand dollar range. Ronnie, am I close? Just my guess, man?
Yeah.
Might be a little bit more than that. I, I don't know. It depends on what the roundup brings forward. I know the fairs.
And in talking to Ann, she said that she, she talked to the Roundup about it and they didn't want to go in for it. Doesn't mean we can't.
Well, I, I think whenever they know that their unusual cost for blue rooms and for sanitizers and everything is reimbursable through the CARES grant, I think they'll be very interested.
I hope so.
Yeah, my discussion with Mr. Muller, I think, has been very interesting. But anyways, those are the only places I, between fair, roundup, this and whatever allowable expenses we've already leveraged, I, um, I think there's still a lot of money on the table if something else comes up in a short time. Today's September first, so there's four months to get this. Whatever it is, if it's something pretty major, it has to be implemented and finished before December thirty-first. And I'm talking out of school, but that's everything I've been told. That's, you can help it all.
So anyway, CARES dollars are even still there by the end of this time, I suppose, even though it's an allowable expenditure. I'm just, I have this little itch on the back of my neck about whether or not there need to be dollars there to replenish this cost. As we move forward, because I think everyone's making a push to try and spend these dollars. I know there's dollars still there right now, but.
Well, the bad thing is, is that, as we all know, that should have been divvied up amongst the counties.
We all know that, yeah.
And now you have to spend the money to get it. And so if we don't spend it, we don't get it. And so.
But I guess what I'm concerned about is spending it and still not getting it.
I, legitimately.
Being the county that, you know, is the third largest in the state and we got eighteen thousand dollars out of the one point six billion that was supposed to be allocated to local governments.
I hear the discussion well.
Okay.
Hear the discussion well.
It's fifty thousand bucks.
I know, but we'll have to need it next year. I don't want to be forced to do it now.
That's the other side of it. We've had that discussion is that, um, throw the CARES dollars away. We have a need within that department for these hard books or roughbooks or whatever you call them. And we haven't done a good job of budgeting replacements always for us. So the gamble just got less right there for me because we have to give them one way or the other in the next half-year. We might go phased in over a couple of years, but.
They're not, they're no longer CEDAs compliant?
Yeah, see, that, that's the thing. And so what's going to happen is, is that we're going to pay for them one way or the other.
Yeah. Whether you care.
They have to be CEDAs compliant, otherwise they won't be able to.
Use labs.
Yeah, they can't use labs. They can't run plates. They can't.
Then the lab, they won't be CEDAs.
So where we're at is, um, discussion today. We make the decision tomorrow. We'll give time enough. James, if you wanted to research, uh, a little bit on the tough books or whatever, some of your thoughts.
I mean, I'm also looking at iFive processors. I mean, they, I mean, for this kind of price, I feel like they should all be iSevens. And AK devices, RAM. I mean, these are all pretty substandard. In my opinion, iFives will do almost everything these officers are asking them to do. But I mean, it's just, I don't know. I feel like the price is awfully high. And maybe that's most of my contention is just the price that we're being charged or we're getting out of that.
This is like the top edge of the quote, though. Like this isn't a formal quote. Yeah? This is just an estimate, but like, so we're not surprised with any of your costs. So I'm not saying this is like the massive cost. I'm going to try to get better prices, of course. But I want you guys to know, this is could be, this could be the worst-case scenario.
Yeah, well, I suppose with that enclosing my comments, I, I'd just like to extend my, uh, if anyone could extend my comments onto Brad Brown, that I'd like to see some better prices. Even though I know this is worst-case scenario, I'd just like to see a little bit better cost savings on this. If we're going to be paying for iFive processors, I'd like to see something a little bit, um, you know, cheaper. You know, be paying four thousand dollars a laptop, even with the hard and military cases and graves and everything else. I mean, I've, I've seen these prices before and I don't remember ever paying four thousand dollars for a laptop. It's just awful lot, even with the additional software. And it seems strange, I suppose, that you have to pay for all the software.
Every time.
Each time. Like, there should, there should be a group of rate or something like that. You know, if you're, you're doing it for the same police agency, I don't know. It's all I got.
Great discussion. Like I said, I think you'll carry it forward tomorrow, go tomorrow. Give Melanie a chance to visit with Brad Brown. Ask him questions you're asking.
And Brad can, tell Brad he can feel free to reach out to me. If you, if, you know, you don't want to be relaying everything, you can just feel free to reach out and talk to me.
So I think that would actually be good because.
That'd be fine, too.
Um, I think you, you talk some of the computer line. You will, you could build some why this, this quality or lack of quality or failure in savings needed.
That's fine.
I'm definitely not the guy to talk about computers. That's all I.
We, we got you to iPhone.
I sold me out.
You're only using one percent of its capacity. I'm up to two percent on mine.
iPhones.
Okay. We haven't had anybody join us yet. We got just about a minute, two minutes before our timed nine-thirty KCC out of district service contract. So we're waiting for Emma, Rennell, and then we've got. Young lady.
That's so sweet of you, James. Well, it just, this CARES conversation just kind of made me wonder. So, so at the fairgrounds, because of COVID, blah, 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 we've had to, you know, we have fourteen RV spots, which is a good revenue for us throughout the year. Um, and we've had to cut them to seven to do the social distancing, et cetera. So what would be the possibility of using CARES dollars to extend seven more spaces out that way? It would probably be to the tune of about ten to fifteen thousand. It would probably be to the tune of about ten to fifteen thousand.
You could do that.
I could?
Yeah.
You just can't replace revenue, but if you make accommodations to provide social distancing, you could use it to reimburse that cost.
So is that something I can look into, the less three is here?
The, yes, uh, on some of our calls, some other county commissioners are being, I guess, looking at, saying that their fairgrounds and everything, Grant County is on.
Yeah.
The challenge is, is for it to be, go out, get the quotes done, get the work done, and everything has to be done by December thirty-first.
Okay. This is advantageous.
So if, well, I, I, I commend anybody and everybody to try to figure out how to leverage these dollars. And that, that's been the gist of our conference call, Senator's and AOC directive. Clearly, this is get your projects in. It would have been better if they'd been done three weeks ago.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so creative thinking like that, I think is very much appreciated.
Okay.
I, I don't want to speak for the whole board, but that's. If you can pull it up by December thirty-first. Okay, one, one of the projects, I think it was, I can't remember which county, but their project was pretty aggressive. I didn't see how they can get through the public process and get the work done in time. I, I think we have to be reasonable and, and do the things that fit, and I think that's something that can fit. All right, our nine-thirty items, we have two people joining. Good morning, Emma.
Dr. Cornell.
All right, and then Superintendent Carter was coming also, or was he calling?
I don't know, he said he would be here, I don't know, something may have been on.
Emma, I think we're getting feedback from you.
Hold on, thank you, hold on, I think. I was locked in on the phone as well as the computer. Uh, where did everybody go?
Oh, we're still here.
Oh, good, okay.
Okay.
All right, I think that's better.
So, Emma, we're sort of waiting for Mr. Carter to join us. Do you know if he, do you have any insight if he was going to call in or come in in person?
I actually don't know.
Okay. So, do we want to wait a little longer? Or do I get, get right through it? Let's go. All right, Phil, then if you show us. Okay, so what we have is a discussion on out-of-district contract with KCC. Uh, we received a letter August twelfth, um, that KCC will not be in, be doing services onsite at ILC, uh, this next school year. Uh, that brought up some, some concerns and worries as the county ourselves have a contract with KCC. And we, there's a fee that comes along with that contract. We pay twenty-five thousand dollars a year for that out-of-district contract. Um, and then it's, uh, KCC gets those dollars, it's up to twenty-five thousand maximum. Um, and then they also are able to leverage other dollars, I believe, through, uh, being in compliance with ORS's, through, uh, through their organization. So with that said, Emma, I, I think I'm going to turn it over and hear what you have to say. You're the chair of the Advisory Committee for KCC here. Am I, do I have that correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the advisory board is here, uh, no matter what college is serving Lake County. So just to, to mention that, we've been around, um, for quite a long time. Mark Proctor, uh, who's no longer with us, kind of turned it over to me at some point, so I inherited a lot of his history. And so it's an important organization, I think, for the county in order to promote higher education and to get the services that we need for students to succeed in higher education. Um, of course, what I'm worried about is that now we're not getting those services, or at least it sounds like we're not getting those services. So, um, so I'm very concerned about that, because I know that the student success rate that we've had, the graduations, uh, and the, uh, people getting through the nursing program, and, um, development of workforce training, all that'll come to the, I, I don't know, but I, I, the students themselves are the, the thing that concerns me the most. They need support to go to college, especially students that aren't sort of on the daily scholarship, aren't just sort of having a lot of, uh, you know, of, um, and, you know, like, the students there have to stay here and work and try to find their way to college, uh, here, and that's, it's not an easy process. And so I'm really worried about having no, uh, Lake County site coordinator as is required by the contract. So I'm just curious what you all think about the contract at this point, what, what, um, you know, when they leave out, I mean, when the college says, oh, well, we're just not going to do that part of it, what does that mean to, to you all? Um, have you had a look at that contract recently, or, or anything?
Yeah, yeah, Sam.
And I've got a number of concerns I can talk about, but I just thought I'd ask you what you, what you thought.
I, I marked exactly what you're, when I looked at the contract, um, my concern was, is that we would have the coordinator here by the contract, um, uh, site coordinator.
Yeah.
So that, that gives me some concerns. I also, to be open-minded, know that right now, that in the education, for higher education and every place else, everybody's scrambling to just try to get the best services on the ground with the less revenue. I believe that our contract with KCC, um, needs to be looked at, and in this particular case, at the minimum, be amended, or they find a way to make sure that service still happens. That, that's my concern. Uh, the letter that we received from them, that talks about that they're, um, online, all the courses, the fourteen associate degrees that can be earned entirely online, all that, there's still opportunity, but not having that site coordinator does concern me. And, uh, I guess with that, that, that's the thing I've seen. I'm curious what else you found in the contract that you was concerned of, other than the site coordinator being present here.
Um, I, I had a couple of things, too. Hello?
Why, why don't you go ahead?
This is Michael Carter, Superintendent. I, I have some real concerns on the, it says right here, it says, must be in writing with a minimum of six months' advance notice. You guys received your letter. The district has not received their letter yet. So you guys received yours on, on August eighth, you said?
Uh, August twelfth, but we've received.
August twelfth, I mean, yes. Well, I mean, it says right here, it says, if either entity desires to terminate the use of the LCC, main floor says termination must be in writing with a minimum of six months' advance notice and only effective at the end of the term of students' convenience. And then, um, it talks about equipment being left. It says, you know, under this agreement, the partner district activities will be else, will receive surplus hardware, furniture, and fixtures under KCC surplus process procedures. Hardware can be included, computers, monitors, keyboards, associated technology, and equipment. And then I received an email yesterday at ten oh four AM. I have not responded back, said that we had this meeting this morning. It says, "Good morning, Michael. First, I am heartbroken that the pandemic and related budget issues put us in this position to suspend KCC ILC activities. I'm falling out on the need to arrange the removal of KCC technology equipment and files from the ILC. Our, um, our IS department is looking at December eighth as the day to remove all technology. But is possible for our facilities and student folks can join them. I'm waiting on confirmation from them. If another day is needed, I will coordinate with you again. I am not able to make the trip the eighth, but I will arrange a face-to-face visit to discuss the next options and reaching high school students and community with educational opportunities at KCC, both credit and non-credit." That was from Chip Mathie. So I'm a little concerned.
That's also a little shocking, I think.
Yeah, I, I was a little concerned. I mean, I, I just got that yesterday, I guess at ten some, and I had in-service yesterday with my new teacher, so I did not get to my emails till last night. But, you know, I'm a little concerned about that, because my problem is, I, I had a meeting with the president, and, um, it turns out that's the day that the governor called her meeting, and I'm on the, I was on that commission, so I, I had to cancel, me driving to Phantom Falls to tour and talk, because I heard rumors they were going to close it. But then I was going to bring the contract with me to that meeting and talk about the six-month minimum advance notice. So I'm a little concerned that, um, we're in this position right now. So I, I wanted to wait for this meeting to get some guidance from all of you, what I, what I need to do and how I can do things, you know. Uh, this con, this agreement, by the way, was signed one seventeen twenty. So it was, you know, this is not, this is a new agreement, so.
Okay, I, I want to make sure that we're, we're talking the same thing, uh, we, we.
Mine's an MOU. I don't have the contract. I only have the MOU, but not have the contract you're talking about.
Okay, so we have an out-of-district contract with KCC for services. Are you talking about your agreement with, for the ILC and with KCC?
Yes, yeah. So I ended different. Mine's the MOU, I'm in my own understanding, for Lake County, ILC, and the KCC use, and that was dated one nine two thousand twenty. So I, I do not have your contract here. But I just want to make sure you knew that some of the things in your contract you've read into me are very similar to what we got.
Okay. So, at least, uh.
That MOU is a, I was just going to point out, that MOU is a result of the fundraising that we did for renovating that entire, you know, that entire half of the building, the stesgos, retrofitting for earthquakes, and then renovating and putting in all that equipment, the synchronous classrooms, the computers. And it cost a lot of grant money and a lot of, um, effort to get all that stuff there, and we really had what we needed, a college site with a couple of classrooms, with synchronous technology, with a computer lab, with an office, with a coordinator. And I just, I'm, I'm, I'm with the, uh, the superintendent here. I can't understand why this is all happening at the last minute, why none of us got any proper notice. And what's going to happen to the students? Um, uh, I'm not, I, I have more to say. I'm, I'm wondering about FTE. Where is the FTE going to come from? And that's how they calculate the, uh, the money from the state. Um, the COD money is calculated on a formula based on FTE, that's full-time equivalent, uh, funding. And if students aren't enrolled through the Lake County office, how are we going to cal, how are they going to calculate the FTE? Does charge every, you know, like, pretend like every Lake County student going online is a, you know, an FTE funder? I, I, I don't know. The whole thing seems a little just last minute and kind of desperate. Um, and I don't appreciate the, um, you know, the disrespect to Lake County. I'm sorry, I just, I, I find that, um, disturbing. Just be, and I know it's hard times for everybody, and I know the college probably is desperate, um, and I normally am a huge supporter of the college. Um, I'm just mad right now. I thought Tuesday was going on, and I'm really worried about the students.
Yeah, I appreciate that very much, Emma. Um, in, in the past, they've been a great partner, but so this is sort of unusual, especially out of Dr. Gutierrez. Um, so I think one of the things we definitely need to do is get that in-person discussion. Um, you mentioned some things that usually whenever things are purchased through grants or grant compliance, and if you don't stay in compliance, then you have to repay that grant. So, um, for the ILC and for the equipment and everything there, there's probably some real questions to be asked on grant compliance and that part of it. So I, I think there's several different parts to this. Uh, the MOU is part of it, and the out-of-district contract, which we need for Lake County, and then the grant. Um, there was a lot of dollars spent on the ILC there that was all related around, uh, KCC being a presence in Lake County. So, um, I think more will come to light, more questions, uh, as we're able to get a face-to-face meeting with somebody, I would suggest Dr. Gutierrez from KCC.
Whoa. From my perspective, I mean, I, I, Dr. Gutierrez, Gutierrez writes in part of his letter, he says, "The partnership KCC has forged in Lake County are part, are me, are important and meaningful." Um, that's true, but it's not just a partnership. It's also, like, like Brad's saying, it's a contract. And I personally kind of like to have our legal counsel here to have some discussion with us, because as I'm looking at it, I personally feel that KCC is in breach of the contract. When they say this suspension of services is, uh, due to the budgetary challenges, regardless of the budgetary challenges, they say that they've decided to dis, discontinue, uh, or decided to continue suspension of KCC Lakeview ILC operations for the foreseeable future. And like, okay, how long is that going to last? I, I, I personally, we have a contract. There's, we put money from Lake County into this, and now we're not getting the services. I mean, it's pretty cut and dry, honestly. I don't know how we can. I, I'd like to have a discussion with the doctor and see how we can come back around to fulfilling the terms of the contract and the MOU.
I, I, I agree with that. Emma, can you enlighten us a little bit on, uh, what is required, and I'm just talking county, and out-of-district contract? If we were to get out of this out-of-district contract with KCC, I'm trying to remember, it's been years, but there is a requirement for the county to have that for our citizens, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know if ORS or AR, or what, what do you know? What do you know about?
Yeah, you, you, I, I'm pretty sure you have to have, kind of have that legislation right in front of me, but, um, but, uh, you, if you don't have a tax base for a college, then the Higher Education Commission, the HECC, signs you up kind of with the partner college to have that contract out of district, and there's not very many of them left. I know the college is really trying to pressure, uh, us to, um, have a, a tax base as a county. And that's one of the big problems, is that we don't have a tax base, like the library has. Uh, the reason we always have a library is because it has that tax base, and the college doesn't have the tax base, and I think, um, people on the board, uh, over there, uh, Board of Education have been raising that concern for some time. Uh, obviously, it's not a great time to try to get a tax, uh, raise, uh, through. So we've been, um, not inclined to try to push for that. But yeah, the, um, we're supposed to still be, um, um, uh, not eligible, but, um, I think, like you said, Brad, probably required to have a contract out of the district if we don't have, um, a tax-based college.
Right.
And that can be any college. It's interesting that North Lake County just,
Yeah.
just, um, didn't it just, didn't COCC just, um, get taken off their tax base? And now they have tax money coming in, but I, I, and KCC is, I guess, the recipient, so it's kind of an interesting, strange position to be in, where we have the county kind of divided like that. Um, I would, you know, um, I would ask the same question up in North Lake County, is, you know, where are the, where is the person who is providing the support for these services? That's, that's really the question, you know, we, you know, it's great to offer services online, but as we all know, going online can be, uh, challenging. It's like a maze. You have to find your way to the right places, or, and if you call people to try to get services, well, you have to get them to answer the phone. Um, having a person is so important. And so I would hope that Lake County, uh, North Lake County is going to get a person, and I think in South Lake County, we deserve a person as well, somebody to, um, to be the liaison with the college. I know our students here are paying fifteen percent extra for an administrative fee, which I assume means for an administrator. Um, so, so yeah, there's ways we could maybe restructure the con, contract, um, although, um, yeah, I, I don't know, I, I'd need a lawyer for that, but we need somebody to help with registration and enrollment, because students can't just sort of go to the college and start enrolling in college classes. They have to have an advisor, they have to have a program, they have to have a degree or certificate-seeking program, they have, they a lot of times have to have financial aid. They a lot of times have to have financial aid, somebody has to kind of guide them in that direction. They need, you know, business office support, you know, we need technical support, people that don't know how to use the computer at all and that need a little help, you know, learning what a mouse is. There's so many different things that a person can do. Also, just giving students the confidence that they too can go to college. It's been so heartwarming. It's been, I think that's why I'm so upset, it's been so heartwarming the last seven years to see the Lake County ILC site become that college campus that we always dreamed of. I mean, it's tiny, it's a little upstairs, you know, floor of the daily middle school. It's not much. But we fought hard for that. And so, and it meant so much to our students. And they got what they needed because there was a coordinator there. In fact, there was a coordinator and then there was another staff person as well who could help the coordinator. And then I was there as an instructor, which was just kind of like icing on the cake that they actually got to talk to a real college instructor. Dr. Agers was there for a while, teaching lab courses in anatomy. That's part of the contract too, is they're supposed to be hiring local instructors. But to do that, you really need a student base that has a place where they can get support. And also, the KCC budget is supposed to be presented to you all, and I'm wondering if that was also done? If the contract says something about you're supposed to have a copy of the KCC budget as it relates to Lake County?
Yes.
So just throwing that out there. So yeah, I'm worried about the students.
I think where we need to, what we have to do at this point is get a representative from KCC before the Board of Commissioners so we can have the discussion. So that's where I'm at, is sooner than later, even a special session if we had to do that. And I would like for it to be with Dr. Ruederos if we can. So we will work on that unless the Board sees a difference in that. We'll have Melanie reach out to KCC and try to make that happen.
Okay. I think in the meantime, we need to have our legal counsel look at our contract.
I already have.
Are you good? Just a quick question. Did my board receive the letter? I believe this was dated on the 24th of August. It was a couple of weeks later, "KCC Board of Trustees Approved the Plan for College to Resume In-Person Classes for the Fall Term." Did you guys receive that letter? Yes. So it was an email. So they decided they're going to suspend services in Lake County with an actual individual person, but then two weeks later, they're going to in-person classes for the fall term. Seems a little double standard there. I, just something that, you know, I mean, again, we're Lake County, and this is just how I feel. I just feel like Lake County's the redheaded stepson of the conversation is normal.
So I believe the decision from KCC on out-of-district contract is a financial decision to not have the coordinator here. The contract says they have to have a coordinator. The ILC is a whole nother MOU and a whole nother part of getting the presence of KCC actually here on the site. So.
Well, then that kind of narrows down kind of what my thoughts were in terms of, okay, if it's just the financial argument, if it's just about the budget, tell me exactly how much you're short of in order to get these services to Lake County. What is it actually going to cost in addition to what they're already paying to get the services here? Why is it more costly now than it was several months ago to provide the additional service? And what is the shortfall that we can work with you guys on in order to make sure that our kids can have the services?
I think that's a very good question, and I believe Dr. Gutierrez will be able to answer that. And I think some of the funding that's coming down through Higher Education has probably been cut, I would assume. Is.
I'm also just wondering about the equipment removal. Because one of the things that would really help our students is if they had a computer lab to go to, if they had the synchronous classrooms, because then they actually get a real teacher from Platte Falls that they can ask questions of in real time, in live time. I would, I really don't like the idea of all that equipment being yanked out of here. For one, it was part of the ILC, which involves grant money. And for the other, that deadline that Mr. Carter was mentioning is September 8th, that's very soon. And that equipment represents a solid infrastructure that was providing the base of, you know, support for our students. So I'm worried about that equipment. I don't know if there's any way to stop that from happening. But it would be good to slow that down if it could.
Yeah, I agree with Emma very much. And I believe, I believe between the school and KCC, there was agreement, probably within the MOU, and they actually, being KCC, was not charged rent for several years, which should be part of the value of that equipment being left there, I would think.
Yeah, very good points. Yeah, don't let it take it.
That's right, we got it.
Yeah, I'm going to be, after this meeting, I'll be talking to Chip and I have an email drafted to him and pointing out that, you know, we have not yet to receive an official letter. Notice canceled MOU dated from 1/9/20 and that was signed by Dr. Gutierrez on 1/17/20. MOU clearly states in writing that at least a six-month notification and, you know, must be, you know, provided. And equipment removal process is spelled out in the MOU, and this does not work for the district.
Mr. Carter, have you had the opportunity to talk with Jim Walz, which was quite involved in the ILC and a lot of the grants? And if not, it would be great to make that connection because he has all the history on a lot of the renovation, that part of it.
No, I have not had a chance to do that yet.
Thank you, Mike Gray.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. We will follow up.
All right, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody. Bye-bye.
This is Carter.
All right, so moving on. Jane is here. Welcome, Jane, our chair of our consortium. I asked Jane to come in today after our four o'clock meeting yesterday on Water Creek Correctional Facilities Coalition. We met with Constantine Sevier and Elena Pearl, I can't remember.
I'm having trouble with it too.
Yeah. Oh, you got a free one? She left her cell phone. Oh, you were there. It's the start of the. All right, Jane, go right ahead. I really wanted to, it was a good meeting, wanted to forward here.
So, yes, as Commissioner Wider said yesterday, we had the full coalition, mine's Charlie Twake, who's on vacation, met with the governor's public safety advisor and the governor's legislative advisor. And it was, I believe, a very good meeting. We started out with kind of a, neither of them had been to Lake County, so we kind of did a, this is Lake County. We went off of the theme when the governor, after the special session, had her press conference. And she said that the two prisons went up close because of humanitarian reasons. So we took that and ran with it. We said we'd like to go a little deeper in those humanitarian reasons. So we talked about this is Lake County, this is Lakeview, this is, we went very deep in economic reasons. We went very deep in the partnership between Lakeview and Water Creek. Talked about, of course, we had Michael Carter here and schools. We just kind of went through all the things that you folks know, so I don't need to tell you. But at the end, the comments that I picked up that I thought were very positive were the things that I think that they picked up and said back to us were, number one, I think they said they learned new things. And I think that was probably the best thing and not negative things. They said that, they stressed over and over that no, no decisions had been made that the, there is no list right now of prisons that will be closed or that are looking to be closed. I believe that when the list went up for the joint or for the special session, I believe that the blowback from the communities surprised everybody. I think that that put them in a position of reevaluating. I think that we heard that. Our two prison employees, Melissa and Brenda, did a wonderful job of explaining what the effect on employees would be closing these prisons, not only just, oh no, I'm out of a job, what am I going to do? But about bumping effects of employees, especially here, how some may have to split their households, go to two separate places to keep their jobs, of how, was it, Brad, was it 30 days? If you don't accept another job, you lose your purse.
So that's what they were saying.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that.
I'm not aware that that has to be some of the different tiers.
Yeah, it's in a different tier, but yeah. Those, how that is not easy when you're here. Where if you are in Salem, there's what, five facilities within 45 miles? That kind of, I could see that per, there is. They also hit hard that this is not a facility that's in disrepair, that it's in good shape. They hit hard on the fact that there had to be some sort of repair on the geothermal.
That was, and I'm glad you brought that up, that was one of the best things. Whenever the construction of the prison, the geothermal line was inferior quality by the contractor. So they had a one-time cost to fix those a year ago. So if you're just looking at numbers, it looks like that there's this high maintenance cost. Well, this was a mistake or an error by the contractor, which it's been too many years to go back on the contractor, so they had to pay, and that's all been upgraded. So it's good for many years on that part.
So that was just another thing that they were able to just clear up, and that was very, very helpful. So all of that, I think, was something that was, you know, it just kind of opened your eyes. The other thing they said, at the end, I asked them, so if you were us, what would your next move be? And they said, well, as we have already done, to be in constant contact with your legislators, we are doing that. People talked about, they did not, as they got off the line, we talked a little bit, people talked about special session. I do not believe, at least I can find one scheduled. There isn't one scheduled, correct?
Not that I know of. Yeah, not that I've seen that, but there's a committee.
Like the emergency board and some of the others, now they're having meetings, but I, I. There might have been some talk about another special session or something, but it's nothing.
Okay, so, okay, so, because, yeah, I went home, I Googled it, I looked, I could not find a special session. Okay, so, so obviously, we're going to keep our legislators up to date. I don't think right now is a good time to like flood legislators with emails and letters again. I mean, if there's a time and a place for that, now's not a good time. I don't like to let things die, but, you know, we can't just keep bugging these people over and over with the same information, with the same, going to send them very nice thank you emails and, you know, follow-up and things like that. But we're kind of in a, in kind of a holding habit now. The governor's staff, of course, putting together a budget. I.
When does her staff have to have that to the governor?
Oh, October will be, they'll be putting the final, everything will come together in October. I believe it's released in November. There is a, what do they call it, when the, the fiscal report comes out, when it's out.
Economic forecast will be in October.
In October.
And that was one thing I mentioned is, is let's see what the economic forecast shows. If you believe that it's a financial reason for them closing it, then let's wait, wait for that forecast. And I would really, especially, one of my concerns is for it to be done by, because actually, the order to shut down prisons, that's one part of it, and I don't even know if that's possible. I would like to see a forecast come out and to go back to the legislature for all the prisons and operations of the prison. That's where I'm at. And I don't know if the governor has the authority to make those administrative decisions, but.
Did you hear him, Brad, when he talked about if prisons are closed, it will be a partnership between the governor and the four legislative leaders, the president, or senator? The speaker, the leader of the minority, the president, and he did not talk about legislative, or governors authority. I think, I think they got her in a day when she was not happy with what happened. I think they calmed down a little bit. I think.
Well, I think people are getting hit from a lot of different angles too. And that wears you down maybe a little bit, hopefully if you're kind of seeing some of the other, the other side some less.
The other thing that he did say after we talked a bit is he mentioned the age of some of the prisons in and out. He mentioned that some of them are over 100 years old and others is 20 years old.
Yeah.
So that was.
Actually 15. It opened in September.
That is true.
Oh, fine.
Five. So I think that is, that's the, that's the high level. I'm gonna go home and you're right. Thank yous. I don't have a grand gesture right now for us to do. I think it's, I'm gonna check in with all of our legislators, check to see what they think the next move ought to be. I don't know, I mean, I'm short of, we have certainly extended invitation from Lake County. I forget, they're all sitting there in phase one in Portland, Salem. And you reminded them we're in phase two, but if you're in phase one, then you have quarantine, you have to come home. And they're very serious about this.
Yeah, and they're all working remotely.
Yeah, they're all working.
They were definitely impressed that we all were asking.
Yes.
And actually, you could tell with Constantine, he welcomed me, I'll talk to a group. I think a lot of people that have to work virtual from home and everything are longing to be able to do work and get out with people. So that was a positive, I took that as a very, very positive. The group, I have to say, Jane's part of the group, nailed it. Just every week, Jane had it organized for everybody to speak with their specific area. And I think it was very good. The employees, I have to back Jane up on that. They've just done an excellent job of keeping their emotions down whenever employees are looking at their life being changed. They stayed to the point that we're. They, they stayed to the point that, that were real and they were stellar.
Yeah, we've got a great coalition. It is on point, on everything's great.
Good. And within the coalition, there's people that have connections statewide and everything that's working within their boundaries and everything is, is a good thing.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, um, for me, look at the bright side, we still have our prison.
We do.
So, you know.
Every day is a good day.
And our blessing is, so, yeah. Um, I think you're, you're spot on about, you know, flooding emails, uh, on all of our legislators. I don't think they need that right now. And, uh, but you've provided us some really good updates that I've really appreciated. And just a discussion with the group after a meeting like that, I think it would be pertinent to, uh, send out emails to legislators and give them an update. At least once a month at this point, you know, unless something big happens. Keep it on their mind.
Yeah.
But don't, yeah, don't harass them or anything like that. They, they get harassed and that.
Yeah.
We make, we make sure of that.
You have a good idea.
Sorry for that.
Sometimes they deserve it.
Well, I think I've- They're saying good morning to you again, so, yeah, go ahead, Mark.
My concern was when we were listening to the special session, when we were, we're gonna be allowed to speak, then we weren't gonna be allowed to testify. And then they called our names, even though they told us in that meeting that we weren't gonna talk about, um, Warner Creek. The thing that got me about the whole thing is there was some high-level officials from DOC that were recommending the closure of Warner Creek and Shutter Creek. And I'm just wondering why we were on the radar in the first place. And, you know, because in the governor's comment, she said that, you know, it was in disrepair, blah, 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 and I'm thinking, she's getting some information somewhere that's not accurate. And I'm just trying to hold over in my own mind where this is coming from to begin with. And so maybe we could start.
So the re- research, uh, they looked at, they, the director was, and others were given the direction to do an analysis of the prison. Uh, Shutter Creek was number one, highest cost. Lake County was number two. Um, not only cost, but services and everything, uh, was seven, they looked at. Um, that has been questioned. I actually even talked to the director some about that. We're working at clarifying things. On the call, the reason why they called my name in Lake County is because I pre-registered. Representative Reski said they would want to hear from us. I did not un-register in case, um, at the last minute, they decided to put on the agenda. They did not want to hear about Warner Creek at the time. Um, so that's the reason why Lake County was called. Um, there's a, I'm not defending anybody, but there's direction comes down from the governor. And people have to look at that again. Within the DOC, which includes adult probation, includes prisons and everything, they are being put through these exercises of efficiency and cost and cost-cutting at this point. Prisons are the first part of this. They will look deeper than prisons. We will be fighting at some point also for adult corrections, I believe.
We were talking to Steve Brown, who came in two weeks ago. After the-
It's been longer than that.
Or, and, and he didn't know a lot about this, that they would critique.
It's a higher level.
Yeah, way up above that.
But that's his level.
And so they didn't even allow him to speak about how well the operation ran.
They're not going to ask Steve Brown, they're going to ask the legislators.
Hmm.
Because every prison superintendent is going to tell you how well they're in these prisons.
And so that's where the coalition, our duty is, is to get that information from the superintendents and from others, to get the factual information and get it to the higher level, to the legisla- legislative people, the governor's staff. And, um, when we get off, we can talk with the director of corrections also. And that's one very positive thing yesterday is, is I think people realize whenever we spoke that there, it's a little bit different than maybe the picture of painting about Warner Creek.
That's, that's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm saying here is, they painted this picture for one that was inhumane and, and rundown. I know for a fact that the prisoners themselves or the inmates wrote letters to the legislature about how well they're treated at Warner Creek. And, um, you know, so I know from a fact by, um, Fin- Senator Finley told me that he received some of those letters, you know, and it was, you know, pretty moving. But, but going back to that, it's just the picture that was painted previously was not true. And I thank you guys for your work in readjusting the focus.
Oh, I, I thought I had it all figured out when the employee shut me down. I thought we could do a virtual tour, but they said you can't do any filming of the prison and everything like that. Boy, I thought I had the best thing figured out.
He's alive.
Boy, they just jerked it right out from under you. But, um, but anyway, it's, yes, the employees have done a good job pointing out exactly what you've said, Mark, is, is that, that, I tell them, adults in custody, AICs, um, were very much in tune with letting people know that this prison here is, is one that has ran very respectfully, very well, and so on and so forth. And, and the other thing that really came through, Mark, is, is, uh, the employees talked about, it's not just a job to go get paid for, that they have ownership. And I think whenever I was watching the monitor there, I think that hit home a little bit. I really do, I think that Elena and Constantine both, I, I, I think they, they got that. So.
The, the only thing that we can't counter and will never be able to counter is distance.
Right.
We are so far from Salem, we're never moving into them. The other thing that they, um, said was a problem is that if a pandemic happened and it happened inside the prison, that a hospital could never handle all the prisoners coming to our hospital. Yeah, yeah.
But, but they-
No.
But, but the prison had the plan, that happened, right?
Yes, the prison has a plan.
And two of us are hospital.
Yes, so it's a hospital. And the hospital and madras could never handle all the hu- all the prisoners and madras coming into that hospital.
As well as every hospital in the state.
As well as every hospital in the state. So I, you know, I wish Charlotte was here, but I don't think that that was the big thing. I mean, that to me is everyone's issue.
Yes, yeah, not specific.
Yeah, the only thing we can't, we can't, one, we can't make a highway. We need, um-
But, but Constantine- Nor would they want to. He did acknowledge that during the meetings and everything, it was more like the direction for prisons to be built more on rural areas and everything. And, and, um, so, um, and that's not a bad thing. I think we can prove that, yeah, it may cost a little bit more on some of the transportation or something, but they figured it out and that's what I don't think is really understood through. We, this prison helps that segment of the operations of prisons that's, that's needed also. Um, yes, most of your inmates are in more populated areas, but they release them out here to climate, Jackson Valley, different places. They, they figured it all out, how covered, closed the best, most efficiently can. So, yeah.
So we'll continue to keep you updated.
Thank you. Uh, while we're on that topic, just real quick, uh, Senator Lynn Finley and Representative Mark Owens are looking to come visit Lake County on the fifteenth and sixteenth of this month. And if it's possible, it might be worth just to let them know where the prison's at.
Sure.
And whatever that may look like, you know, social distancing and everything taken into account, if they could go out and visit and get a better understanding of the layout and the situation, location, and maybe get a chance to just, maybe not a full tour of the facility, obviously, but at least get to see some, some things. And if, uh, we could get some help from you guys. I believe they're planning on being here sometime late on the fifteenth in the evening and maybe having, uh, um, an informal meet and greet sometime that evening. We're still looking at a location, I'm working with Rebecca Tweed, uh, looking at a location. Um, the, the next day on the sixteenth, they're planning to attend our county court or, uh, board meeting here.
Okay.
And, uh, and they'd like to fill the space up the rest of the day, maybe with some other activities. And I think the prison would be absolutely paramount if they could. I don't believe Mark Owens has ever seen it. And I don't believe Lynn Finley, Senator Finley, has ever been there either. Um, it is outside of their districts, but I, they are still representative of Lake County. Yeah, not by very far. And it's still, their districts are Lake County and the prison closure affects the entire county. So I would just like to make sure that all of our reps and senators have a better understanding of situation, geography and everything. That's all I got.
Thank you, Doug, that's good, good information.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, and appreciate you making the trip and just-
Get groceries.
Okay, um, let me see here, A C P, uh, district. I don't, I think we've, uh, tomorrow we will be in Silver Lake. Tomorrow we will be going over, um, road name here tomorrow. So that, we do have the North Lake EMS, if we want to have a discussion on that today.
Um, I presented to you guys some papers the other day. Um, I was talking to Ann and I managed to come up with, uh, not just the quote that Melanie had given to me before in terms of how much that we had given for the defibrillators in Paisley, up to fourteen thousand, but also, uh, uh, you'll see an email from Ann to me where we had had some discussion on this some months ago about the fact that it wasn't, that they didn't actually expend the full fourteen thousand. They actually only spent about twelve thousand and some. And then they returned it because we were supposed to only pay for half. Uh, but we approved up to fourteen thousand. So they were able to bring the price down. Um, it only actually costs is about twelve thousand and some. So I just wanted to make sure you guys had that info and everything for the discussion tomorrow. Um, on that note, uh, several folks have expressed the desire to call in tomorrow. Melanie, can we do, call in maybe on a cell phone or something? I can do it online. Um, at least one individual would like to be present by phone because she, she's not able to make it all the way from Christmas Valley, from the EMS over there because she'll be on call. So, um, anyway, we'll be in Silver Lake and she wants to be-
I would have to do it by cell phone.
Yeah, just however we can make that work. I just figured I'd give you guys a heads up since we have to.
Do we?
Don't let me forget, basically.
Okay, it's, it's a non-timed item, so, um, we've done cell phones in the past.
Yeah, just make sure that some of the EMS folks can be present for the conversation and stuff. They can listen to what's going on. I think several folks are planning on being there in person along with, uh, I believe Gary Brain and Keith Little, of course, from Silver Lake for the discussion, so hopefully.
Okay.
Uh, no more discussion on that. Uh, we talked about Lynn and Mark's, uh, visit. Um, it might be worth it to have them visit a few other things, maybe get an idea of our railroad.
Red Rock.
Red Rock, facilities and different things. And while they're here, maybe give them a little bit of a tour of Lake County and some of the major projects that we have going on, um, so they have a better understanding of the thing. So, uh, if we can schedule that for sometime on the sixteenth, um, either in the morning or we can even reschedule our board meeting or something, even work around, make sure that we have some afternoon or something to work with them. They're wanting to leave sometime in the, I think, three to four or something. I think they're wanting to get out of here because it's a long drive back. So, um, we can fill up that afternoon and some stuff.
I agree with them.
Yeah. Keep you guys in the loop on that.
Load them up.
Yeah, um, and maybe some breakfast in the morning or something. I don't know if you guys are keen for some breakfast with them, maybe a coffee? Uh, they'll sit down and chat. Uh, I haven't been able to get Vicky Iverson down here yet, but, uh, getting Mark and Lynn, I think is a big step.
I, I believe, uh, breakfast, uh, that, that's something's there. He doesn't normally start to, and, but breakfast is good.
Okay.
Um, I, I would enjoy doing that with her.
Breakfast later. Good, good. I'll let, um, Rebecca Tweed know. The other thing, um, East Bay Road, before we get on the relative, uh, discussion I want to have, East Bay, Chris, um, in Silver Lake, would you guys be interested in going out there after, after our meeting tomorrow? Um, going out there and taking a look at the East Bay Road? I think it'd be really good to take a look at.
For me, I have a very important call with, uh, attorney's at four o'clock here.
Okay.
Depends on what time we get done.
Would you like to go in the morning? I don't know, I just wanted to maybe put it on your radar if you guys wanted to go take a look before or after.
Quite good ownership in that.
Yeah, I know, I know.
That goes way back.
I just want to make sure while we're already up there, East Bay's just up the road and they're doing such awesome stuff on it, it might, it'd be really good for the whole crew to see the three of us take a look at it.
I would like to see that. I'm going to, um, time will, time will help.
Okay, just putting it on the radar.
Yeah. I, I have to be here for that call, not option.
Okay, yeah, no, that's fine, yeah, I understand, understood.
I would rather you have the call.
No, we're glad.
No, you're good, yep.
So yes, um, time allows, I will be there. I would rather be looking at East Bay Road. Um, relative, you wanted to talk a little bit about relative.
So I know you guys don't have the whole contract and everything in front of you or the potential draft of the agreement, uh, for the revenue stream and everything else. Uh, it's, there, just because you did so much work on this, Brett, did we end up taking two point five completely out or changing it? I mean, I've got some of the, some of the additional language here.
We worked on that in the work session. I do not have, uh, either one of them, I have both of them marked up. Um, uh, so I appreciate you coming back forward with this because of, well, one reason I'll just say outright is this is huge to do.
Right.
And I'm not doing a cop-out, I'm just saying, I'm not going to be here whenever, whenever you guys are tasked to make sure that this is implemented. So I'm, I'm really excited for the, we all three have to take ownership. I worked very hard on it, but we've got to, got to get someplace on that. We need to get, um, get that to the next level, get it back to Toby. Um, okay, we have to have some, in my opinion, um, pretty strong commitment that, um, would go further than just with Goose Lake Rel. There has to be, I, I don't have in front of me, like, there.
Yeah.
There has to be that if, if for some reason they get out of the contract, that it has to carry forward to-
The next, the next greater.
I don't think that's the, I don't think we put that in there. But, um, we've agreed the loan, the loan is, is ready. And we're not liable for any cost or any interest until we start drawing that down.
Okay.
But it's a two point nine million dollar loan that will be serviced by a surgeon- But it's a two point nine million dollar loan that will be serviced by a surcharge through the railroad to the. People like the ship owner, the shipper, so. Just want it to be as, as good as we can get.
Right, and I'll, and I'll take a little bit of, you know, just take a little bit of heat on this as I, I was kind of waiting to hear. Back on section two point five and the language and everything. I don't know if I missed an email or what. But I wasn't being pushy or anything and I, I think I needed to be a little bit more proactive.
Well.
And following up with you and everyone else who were, so.
Dave, Dave and definitely stay in contact with them. Dave's department, it's our contract. But yes, we need to get, get this more finalized.
Yeah, I, I really feel comfortable with the language of this. Obviously, the operating agreement is something that we can't change. There are some things in that that I don't know I was necessarily one hundred percent comfortable with. But it is what it is and I can work with it. Um, no offense to you or anyone else, but I just.
I, I could beat up the.
Okay, all right, all right. Well, it's good to know that I'm, I'm the only one that was, I was, I had to. I had to take a few moments sometimes reading that contract.
Yeah.
But the, but this, or the agreement. This, however, the only thing that I was really finding that was sticking out to me were just grammatical things. Maybe, uh, I think actually section two point four, actually mark them down and I can get this to you basically. The two, it should be a the, I, I would assume just in the language of it. Little things like.
I don't know if we caught that when we, when I brought it forward in the work session, but everything you, you catch.
Yeah, I'm just making notes all the way through. There's a couple of others.
We haven't finalized that draft either.
No, it's still draft.
It's still drafted. And, um, what we have to do is give it to, where we want the draft to be. Get it back to Toby, to the Goose Lake Rel and see if they are good with what we have rewritten because some of that stuff needs to come out there. We've already done, I don't know which copy of draft you have.
Yeah, I, um, I was told I have the most recent copy of draft.
Okay.
So, and I was very adamant to get the most recent copy because I was. I was looking at things that we already made decisions on in terms of moving.
So, um, I encourage, why don't we bring this back forward to, um, our work session, our next work session. And, uh, and have an in-depth conversation on it. Get everything in there if you can now. Work with Dave and, and Toby. Give Toby a call on any questions you have. And it'd be best if we could get Toby here for that work session also because that could just sort of possibly speed some things up.
Right, okay. Um, the other thing. If we have these drafts, can we make sure that we put the dates on the most recent draft? Make sure that we can keep track of the most recent one. Not, I'm, not, not a point of criticism, it's a point of.
I'm, I, I've laughed because I, hey, uh. It's a good point. I've never put a date on draft before on the, the new drafts and new drafts. I think that's an excellent idea. All the years I've never put the date on.
You don't know which draft?
Yeah. I ran into it when I was building the, the phase one, phase two plan. We were constantly, wait a minute, which version is this? And so I was. Going through dates and time because it was moving so fast and putting that time. This is the most recent.
It's so obvious that we should do that because of, uh, we're working railroad this fifteen minutes and then we're working COVID nineteen and then we're working prison and then we're over to mental health and.
Okay.
Whatever. So that's a good point.
Yeah.
Idea.
It might just kind of help us so we're not running around trying to make sure that we're not.
So maybe would you keep those very old photographs and stuff?
Well, maybe, I, I'm just bringing it to you guys' attention whenever we're, if we do any. Um, work digitally with this on our laptops and we start making changes and we're going to pass it on to the, to the others or whatever else and to Ann and. Dave.
When you said we, and then do this on our laptops.
You just kind of.
You just said whenever I, because Mark and I don't go into our laptops rewriting, so.
I wouldn't know how.
All right, you're dating yourself now, you guys.
Maybe I need some computer.
All right, well.
I appreciate so much of you making sure to keep this there and that, that is really where I'm at, guys, is the ownership of the board and, and. You guys is, uh, going on as ministers, um. Need to have, have all that ownership so that whenever you're questioned. It's, it's right there, so.
Yep, yep, okay. The only other thing on that, just before we move on. I would like to schedule a meeting with some of the shippers. And, uh, with, and if you, you want to attend, we'll go down to Red Rock or something together. Um, all three of us even and just to get an update from them and stuff.
Need, need to get, um, things re-timbled with Red Rock as far as during the operation or during the construction. Also with Terry leaving, I haven't been as involved. Um, all the shippers and that. That is where that we need to have Dave call an advisory meeting and on your, your vice par advisory board. For the railroad, um, we haven't had a meeting for a while and it's advisory, um, so. We should have, that, that, that's what needs to happen. You're, you're touching on what we have in place that's just happened, right?
I would like to do an onsite visit though down at Red Rock as well. And the, also the mineral mining stuff will just maybe go down there so we, they can have a chance to hit us with their concerns and throw as much at us as they want.
You know, I think that is a really good. I've reached out. I have not met the new owners or anything. I think, um, as a board, we need to reach out and give them. Emeralds. Think about that. Right, it's ownership of it now.
And also Collins, because I don't know, I assume you guys know Deep Brown is no longer there, so. It would be good just to kind of foster and build some relationships with the management there.
Absolutely, you know it. And on the railroad, and get those connections, the railroad advisory is a great way to hold those people together. Railroad's, railroad's kind of our life. So it is a. It is so much more important than a lot of people realize that Red Rocks and the world would even look at us. We didn't have the railroad. Amongst other potential things is look at us. Yeah.
That's all I have. All right, thank you.
You bet. Mr. Albert's an OSHA letter. So as we discussed in the meeting this morning about the OSHA letter, it's got to be in by September eighth. So. I don't, I, I think we not only need to go to the Oregon OSHA, but we need to go to. It's ahead of OSHA is the, um, labor. Department of Labor. Is the fed level. And. I think we need to write letters to both. Because the feds, of course. Take what the state is running. So. I, I guess I'm lighting them a little bit or whatever. Um, I haven't done as much work on OSHA. I reviewed a few things and it's just ridiculous. I listened to the. Conversation with what's coming down. I, I thought as counties, we were signing on with AOC. To go against part two. Yeah, go against some of the proposed.
Yeah.
OSHA thing. And, and I was pretty comfortable with that because it gave quite a bit of power. And, and I had also, I mentioned to James, he worked on this.
Yeah, I started putting the letter together.
County letter and I don't know, U Lake County letter and sign on with AOC. If we do, we want to make sure that they sort of complement each other. Well, that's kind of why I brought it up, if you guys want to. If you want to just stick with AOCs or you want to write our own too.
We can do both. And I mean, I started writing, uh, some language, but then a bunch of other stuff came out. And I was. Hon- honestly, I was a little overwhelmed. I mean, the, the requirements that they're, excuse me, putting on ambulance services and everything else, I was reading through those today. And, uh, just on our public, private, volunteer, nonprofit, everything, I mean, they are just. I believe they're just completely overstepping their bounds and there's no one ringing them in. And, uh. We, we lack a certain amount of team, I think, in the conversation. We were hoping to have some of those teams working with AOC. And not that we didn't, uh, I think AOC's been very supportive and they've done these letters and we've signed on to them and I've, I've made sure that they had my. My signature on a lot of these letters, but at the same time.
You, you know that it's changing. Right, you start working on the letter and then they come out with another one and they want this done by, uh, September eighth. I, I honestly believe that it is overreach. OSHA is supposed to be there for, um, protection of operations. For employees or, or everybody involved.
Right.
At the right level.
Right.
Not to come in and force and force them even onto the counties.
And, and what happens if you are not able to comply? And this is my frustration, especially on the EMS side of things, because it shows just an absolute lack of understanding. Of what our EMS guys have to go through, what an ambulance run actually entails. I mean, they've got this whole thing in here in this one section, sanitation requirements outlined in two, section C, section A, whatever. It says, "All shared equipment and high-touch surfaces must be cleaned before. And before used by another employee in between patient care episodes." So, does this mean you have to go after you do a run to save someone's life? And there might, and someone touched something, the gurney or whatever else, you have to go all the way back to the ambulance barn? Need to sanitize, clean the entire ambulance, all the equipment and everything else that might have been touched? And then respond to the next life-saving call.
I, I would say they already do that.
Well, they do it as much as they can, but once the standard they're setting. Right, but when you're in that life-saving situation where you've got multiple emergencies you're responding to. Prison Valley's great, they have two ambulances. Not everyone does have two ambulances to handle these things. And.
The roles and stuff coming down there, I know that Representative Vicky Bries Iverson has been working on this very hard.
We've been texting this morning.
So I, I guess it's getting back to. Do we want to sign on with AOC and put our thoughts to AOC? Do we want to do like you say, we can do both? What do we want to do? And where are we going to make the biggest difference? I don't know. Well, why don't you, the governing body of OSHA is the United States government. Do they know what Oregon's OSHA is doing? And so maybe we need to get Congressman Walton's office involved. I guess I can get ahold of them and see. Whether you work on another letter.
I can, I can work on a letter, but again, it's, I, I feel like I'm just spouting mouth movement and, I mean. If they don't take the letter from AOC seriously, why would they take a letter from Lake County seriously? I'm not, I, I'm just, I'm not trying to be funny or sarcastic or anything. I'm just.
Well, and I guess, um, we're, to be honest with you. Working through all this, you have to put the letter together. Having skill, right?
They're dating themselves again. Just want everyone to know.
But, but I mean, no, going back to phase one and phase two, what you guys worked on, the input that I just attached on. You didn't want to work. So you've inherited that by default.
I, I have no problem and I don't, don't take this as any way I'm, I'm complaining or anything. I have absolutely no problem writing a letter. In fact, there are times which I actually very much enjoy. Writing some of these letters because I get into it and I start writing it out and I, I get it all out of my system. And I can, I can say exactly what I, what I think. And generally, for the most part, and I appreciate this, as of my board, you guys have gone along with most of what I have to say. I, I, I guess it's. I'm, I, I want us to be thinking about other things and other actions and other, other avenues that we can explore. Uh, take in terms of, uh. Trying to get OSHA's attention or getting the state or the federal government's attention, uh, and bring shed light on. What I believe to be an absolute overreach. And, uh, going well beyond what OSHA should be doing. Uh, like there are things that they're writing that are perfectly fine, like you're saying. Some of the cleaning, uh, um, regiments and everything else that our ambulance services and our businesses and everyone else have. They're already doing them. And so it's not that those are bad things to do. It's the idea of allowing OSHA to suddenly come in and establish precedent. In terms of having this type of authority over all these other entities.
Well, that's why I was, I'm thinking we need to go to their boss. And the thing is, is that we're writing letters to OSHA. But they're blowing us off and so. That's why I'm thinking. So I don't think it's bad. I believe that policy and the implementation of their policies and everything happening at the state level. So I think that the letters put together, uh, awareness to the federal side of the way that. Oregon OSHA has implemented these policies and rules and standards. It's just not acceptable if we like for the federal side to take a look at that. Not knowing exactly, exactly, um. Who's able to change the policies? Is it strictly the government? These, these things that are in, asked to be implemented. Who is it that Robert Stampson said these are the new policies? Is it the governor? Is it the committee? Well, like the state of Texas. OSHA has no jurisdiction and that's even at their county level. And how do we get there? That's where, well, well, but that, do we want to be there? What's the, I guess what we're doing is we're questioning what is to do with OSHA because the OSHA serves a purpose. It is the overreach that I believe that, that we're concerned about. We want, we want healthy work conditions for people. We want safe working conditions for people. And when these, these departments and everything are established, they're established for a reason. But I believe there's no overreach at this point with the pandemic. And that's, that's where my mind goes is, is, all right, you know. Is there just one more thing for a county? A private business to get fined for because of we're not implemented? Because of OSHA, it's, it's not just for the private sector, it's for government also. We've experienced OSHA fines here. I don't think we need more. Rules that's an overreach to build a company and give us a fine. I, I'd be curious where that might go to when I get fined. I think it's a black hole. But you, you know, um. As administrators here and in the leg of government, you know, there, there, most things are. Put together and I'm talking way back, OSHA was put together for a reason. An overreach is what I'm, I'm struggling with, yeah. Especially during a pandemic, if this becomes the rule and the law. Then when the pandemic slows down or goes away. Then our business is not still governed to those standards.
Then our Z business is not still governed to those standards. And then we will be, yes.
So and so they're establishing precedent right now. And I just feel like this is a very dangerous road to go down unless we speak up. But I mean, we will speak up, we'll write letters and everything else, and we can, we can sit there years from now and say, we told you so. But it doesn't really stop in the long run. So as long as we're just all cognizant of this, we've had discussion now, you know, as a board, which is good. Because we haven't had a chance to really delve into this since a lot of these changes came out. Appreciate that. Just kind of keep it in the back of our heads as we're moving forward that we may need more than just a couple of letters.
Well, I I tell you, um, just as a moment. It's almost a full-time, eight-hour day to work on with what's coming down the pike. For most of men with timeframes to comment with that amount of time and everything, and so. That's one of the many, um, extra duties that come on, say, through the pandemic. Along with just normal operations. Anyways, um, no pressure, as soon as you get your draft letter together, be sure and date it. And, uh, first draft, get it out to us to review.
Sounds good, no, I expect you guys to just approve it, I'm not going to write a second draft.
Well, you're writing the next year.
Well, I'm just establishing, you know, this is the, this is the guidelines now for this particular subject.
I, um. I I would say as you're putting that letter together, James, I don't think you have to reinvent all of it. I think that through Gina, through AOC, through fellow commissioners, through representatives. Um, Representative Vicki Bries-Irvin. I think the the main ones that need to be hit have been, been, um. Noted, you know.
Has AOC, have they came up with their final draft?
I I, all I know is from our conversations, and it wasn't a conversation today about that other thing. I think Gina said we need to get our letters in there. At one point, they were asking for us to sign on.
Yeah, I think I sent in my signature, maybe if you guys want to check and.
Yeah, we need to follow up with Gina and see where AOC is.
Yeah, maybe Sarah or someone else at AOC find out if there is. If there's, if they haven't sent that letter or whatever else, or you guys don't know if they have their signatures, let me just make sure they have it.
I, I can't remember, I done my signature on something. Was it, was, was that the one? Was it? Okay. You should, you should know, but I first second draft.
I didn't know the draft.
They didn't know.
Okay, are we good on OSHA?
I'm good on OSHA.
Um, department updates, Melanie, do you have anything that you need to let us know? Liaison updates. Pretty much, uh, for me, Jane covered the coalition side of it. Can't compliment everybody enough on that coalition, very professional. Um, Fair Board, um, roundup. It's going to happen, the roundup is going forward, obviously. If you have to buy your tickets, you need to get them. Even if you don't go, the financial support is appreciated.
Yes. Appreciate it.
Um, the water project out there has went well, there's still, uh, some things being done. So we're coming in so far quite a ways under budget. As you know, we slated eight thousand dollars to come out of the video lottery dollars up to eight thousand. Didn't think that's out, we split evenly between roundup and the fair board. Kudos go out to our administrative assistant, she has kept me straight and kept things going. With the rough, right now, we're at four thousand and change, should have spent on that. Um, the volunteers, the roundup people that volunteered their equipment or time, incredible. So that that's good, it's going to really help out there, we have some thoughts of, uh, and we stubbed off the two-inch line. To, uh, extend it on out in the future, maybe where the directors would stay out by the ATV track and have water out there. The positive about that is the directors and the roundup goes on about five days out of the year. We would have an overflow, but it's not with no power for this water. It might typically be to put an RV out there, a fire can, different things, so. Um, working in unison, back and forth between the fair board and the roundup. There's no positive intent, so. It was, uh, really work, but we, we had a lot of volunteers. Real, real appreciate you bringing that forward, James, I, I've been sitting on it. I should have pushed a bit harder on that, but it doesn't matter where we're at. And, uh, I think she's kept you guys up to date, um, as far as the Chrissy Grant, the five point one million dollars, um, Chrissy Grant. And through the FRA, they are still going through our change of. Operations, I guess you'd say, change of, um, our request, whenever they wouldn't allow the one point five million batch from Red Rock. We changed our scope of work, um, to build wood. So they haven't approved that absolutely right at the, or they would approve that scope of work. And then they've answered from Goose Lake Grill as soon in information because of the day we're logging. Thought we were going to do some a little bit more extensive work on some of the bridges right down into the waterways, which we are not. So that some meat and other things that were required for that aren't necessary, so getting all that cleared up, so. Stay in touch with the can, mainly on the FRA and that Chrissy Grant site of it, as we all know, or other. Match dollars is what we're talking about to get this agreement.
Well, okay. I think that's.
My liaison updates for right now.
I do have, uh, one, I'm not sure it's entirely a, uh, a liaison update, but it came through my OEM stuff. Uh, FEMA is having a workshop today, and I'm speaking with Sarah O'Brien right now. She's, uh, with, um, the Willamette Partnership, she's the executive director. But, uh, they are covering the biological opinion discussion for, um, critical habitat for listed salmon. And a few other species. Now. When I came across this, and I came across my desk, I was looking at it and I noticed that the area that they list, the NFIP, uh, biological opinion area. Uh, extends into the northeastern corner of Lake County. And.
No, don't know all of that.
Right, so, okay, so I, I, uh, I saw it and I, I sked, I, um, registered for the, um. The discussion, and out of the blue, I got an email from Sarah. She wrote me and she says, I noticed your registration for the FEMA workshop. Um, and wanted to make sure you were aware that the biological opinion we're discussing doesn't cover Lake County. It only applies to parts of the state with critical habitat for salmon and other species. Uh, you're welcome to join, just wanted to give you a heads up and make sure we weren't wasting your time. And I get emails like that, it's typically like, you're not needed, we don't want you there, but that's, that's just how I read it. I wrote her back and I, I just, this is for you guys' information, this is one of the things I'm kind of working on today. Make sure that I'm on the right track on this, if you guys want to give me your thoughts. I wrote her, I said, yes, Sarah, I had realized that, but I had also noticed that the map shows the geographical area of discussion. Um, does touch the furthest, most northeast corner of Lake County, and it's not clear to me why. I know the country.
Northeast.
Northeastern corner. We're talking, uh.
Wagon turn.
Yeah, out that way, yeah, so. Yeah, I I know.
But that'd be Highway twenty.
Highway twenty area, but it extends past Highway twenty into Lake County. And it, and so I know the country and topography well, I grew up up there and I'm wondering what species. Habitat or biological topics of discussion might warrant having the portion of Lake County on the map. From Frederick's Butte to Harney County, there are thousands of acres of Lake County lands included in the OR NFIP, uh, buy-off area, according to the map. If the, if the buy-off area doesn't cover Lake County and the border lines, uh, are a bad representation of the focus area. Why have a map at all? Perhaps you can help me and save my time, I appreciate you reaching out, thanks. And so she wrote me, she wrote several other people, include CC'd them an email back and asked if, uh, they could write me. They didn't, she wrote me back again, uh, with a, with a third person CC'd an email, who I, I don't know any of these people. Um, but basically, they're wanting a one-on-one call, basically, to see about, um. Figuring out what they can do now, basically, but they're saying, it seems, she wrote, she said, it seems like you've presented us with an interesting conundrum. I haven't, you've never seen that, uh, word used for quite, quite a while. Well, it's.
Use that later.
Yeah, I know. I passed your question on to our federal partners, and it seems like we've got a classic case of something that makes sense on paper. But then not so much in real life. Seems like the area defined by the buy-off was along basin lines, and therefore the map shows some areas that are within basins. That have listed fish, but where presumably there are no actual fish-bearing streams.
Thank you for working on this because of the maps become actual.
Right.
And where I I argued that point on the safety routes, and you don't want to get me going. But it's a good catch, the, the one thing that you will probably find out, where it goes basin, except for. We do have one little bit of water that has good ocean. And, yeah, the top, no.
It's the gear heart.
Yeah, that's sprayed or something.
Yeah, sprayed.
Written, one of the terrific regions here, I don't believe salmon have ever been.
Well, definitely no salmon have been to the northeastern corner of Lake County's for at least ten thousand years.
Just too young, that's the reason why wagon tire dried up, is the salmon fishing away. And and they no longer have that tourism aspect to wagon tire.
Sure, that area is above forty-five thousand feet, there has not been salmon there for a long time.
Same as Crystal Valley, it was cleared out years ago and all the trees are gone.
Yeah, well, anyway, I just wanted to update you gentlemen on it and let you know that I'm going to be advocating for Lake County to be removed entirely from the list. If they want to go along county lines because there are resources within those counties, that's fine. But they really should stick to the tributaries and waterways that actually are affected. And not be extending it simply because basins extend far beyond.
That that would be one of the hardest things right there, to, to, whenever it goes high level. In Washington DC and saying, there's no fish there, and nobody ever seen Lake County or even known that. But the map says, yes, there is.
And so where the hell did this?
And you just waste your time with an argument, that would get drawn in to these other things that will jeopardize grazing to water.
Right.
So, good catch.
Just wanted, yeah, just wanted to give you guys an update, that's one of the things I was working on this morning.
Yeah, but that's, that's what happens, it goes all the way to DC.
Yep.
Now on paper, if it says this on paper and the biologist whatever says it's real. You have a hard time convincing them that.
Sounds good. That's all I have.
Anything else from the court, do you have any updates? All right, so tomorrow we will be ten o'clock, Silver Lake Fire Hall. Tour afterwards, are you coordinated, we just show up and, and the master room, no?
Yeah.
When he sees me, like, um, are you traveling alone?
I'm actually heading up north tonight.
I figured you probably were.
Just gonna stay at home tonight and I'll meet you guys in Silver Lake.
Get you there. Mark, are you, um, driving tomorrow, are you in a different vehicle while we do? Figure we roll together if you want.
So, sounds good.
I'll be in my personal.
As long as I'm driving.
That's mandatory.
Especially if you need to be back by four o'clock, I need to be driven.
All right, with that, we.
All right.
We will adjourn at five minutes after eleven, thank you, guys.